Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Taft. I'm the president of Downtown Fort Worth Inc. And thanks for coming out this evening for this town hall meeting. I think I'm saying, I'm safe in saying that this is a historic event in the history of Fort Worth. I don't think we've ever had an opportunity to come together in a town hall meeting setting to talk about three projects that total about $1.2 billion. So you're all a part of history. Now, what you're going to hear tonight is the result of a lot of hard work and a lot of patience and a lot of persistence by a lot of people over a long period of time. City staff and elected officials, the Tarrant County staff and elected officials, Texas A&amp;M leaders and their consultants and volunteers and staff, board, volunteers, consulting teams, engaged by Visit Fort Worth, Texas A&amp;M, The Omni, and a slew of others have all been involved in all of these projects for a number of years. And there's a lot left to do, of course, a lot of design, a lot of engineering, a lot of coordination, logistics and financing. But interest is so, is so high in these projects that we're here tonight to talk about them early in the process, trying to get the ball rolling in the right direction. So judging by tonight's turnout and a number of people are still coming in, there really is a lot of interest in these projects and a lot of interest in what's going to happen in this quarter of downtown. And rightfully so, really. It's my pleasure to introduce to you our mayor, Mattie Parker.
Good evening. How's everybody? I thought I was going to have to do the thing like you were in school and your professor said, everybody come to the front because it was empty in the back, but y'all are feeling in okay. Glad you take the time to come this evening. As Andy already mentioned, this is a historic event and I hope tonight is importantly, you get the right kind of information that you want as taxpayers and as citizens, as interested patrons of what, of the city that we all love. And that's really about the convention center expansion, of course, and Texas A&amp;M's presence and the Omni Hotel. First, we got to say thanks to Public Events because we couldn't be here without them. Thanks to Mike Crum and his entire team for making tonight happen and to really facilitate this conversation this evening. Our theme to discuss and really kick things off is simple, that we believe Fort Worth always moves forward. That's a big theme that's embodied in the future of this convention center district here in beautiful downtown Fort Worth. From the days of the cattle drives after the Civil War, this area was called Hell's Half Acre. And you can imagine that Aggies are really having fun with that right now. While there's always been a convention from time to time, known to raise hell a time or two, usually those phone calls when someone doesn't like the convention come to City Hall for mayor and council to deal with. Jokes aside, this convention center has helped improve this area that was built by the county in the late 1960s. And not a week goes by without someone pulling me aside and reminding me of the concert they once saw. I think most prevalent is usually the Rolling Stones concert, which most people really want to remind me how cool it was to have Mick Jagger here in Fort Worth, maybe against Sunita Dicky's arena. We're standing right here where the 3,000 seat John F. Kennedy Theater once hosted the symphony and other performances, which gave way, of course, to the great Bass Performance Hall, where we expanded the convention center again in 2003. And now importantly, it is much past time to expand again. We are the 13th largest city in the nation. We are the fastest growing city in the country. And right now, we're going at an amazing clip. Our city manager, David Cook, introduced the beginning of the Fort Worth fiscal year, FY '24 budget, and we grow by 100,000 people every five years in the city of Fort Worth. But unfortunately, our convention space only ranks 47th today. Doesn't really even out, and those of you in the audience that care about competing well, I don't think that's enough and that's really why we're here today. Again, Fort Worth always moves forward. Visitors absolutely love Fort Worth, but candidly, we need more for those visitors, especially when it comes to hotel rooms to accommodate them. We have less than half the hotel capacity than our neighbors of Dallas and the city of Austin. And with the expansion of The Omni is so vital, supporting and growing our over $3 billion visitor economy right here in Fort Worth. The Omni opened in 2009 as our largest convention headquarters hotel. And we heard Omni owner Bob Rawling just recently at the Downtown Fort Worth Inc. breakfast tell us they are eager to do even more, and Larry, we're quite excited about that. There are two aspects of this project that excite me most. First, this district, the southern half of downtown, will be an exciting hub for convening people from around the country and the world on very important topics, everything from industry and innovation, not just here at the convention center, but also next door with the Texas A&amp;M Fort Worth campus, which is truly transformative. Fort Worth can have the best convention center package in the nation with an easy walk to Sundance Square, Trinity Metro's text rail to and from the incredible DFW airport, and soon to take you into the medical district as well, and flights from any U.S. city in four hours or less at the second busiest airport in the entire world that has an economic impact of $37 billion every single year. When we convene people here, we introduce them to our city and give them a look at why they should do more business here and invest here. Conventions, meetings, and events are vital marketing tools for Fort Worth and our economic development team. And it's important for me to note that the leadership at Visit Fort Worth, of course, led by Bob Jamison, is a huge part of the success story. So much of Fort Worth coming onto the map did not start with economic development, candidly. It started with visitor tourism, and the city of Fort Worth has been an excellent partner of Visit. We're very thankful for their leadership to help us come to these moments of huge economic investment in downtown Fort Worth. And the second thing I want to end on for emphasis is my, and my top priority, most of us here in council that are here, I know council colleagues, I see Macy Hill here and Elizabeth Beck, who represents District Nine, and she'd be mad at me if I didn't remind people of that. Everyone is toiling across Texas with property taxes. It was, it was a predominant topic, of course, this last legislative session, and the focus was on school property taxes. But each of you are quite aware that one-third of your tax bill goes to the city of Fort Worth to help us fund vital city services, everything from police officers to firefighters to libraries and parks. The best way I know how to truly buy down your property taxes is investment in visitor tourism across the city of Fort Worth. And the math, candidly, is quite simple. Those are not your tax dollars. They are visitor tax dollars coming into your city to support your local economy. So keep, keep that in mind as you think about this amazing investments and these projects that are happening in the city of Fort Worth, that can, we can do all of this without $1 of additional property tax burden on taxpayers across the city of Fort Worth. This project is incredibly monumental. Phase one of the convention center expansion will be paid for by ARPA dollars and again, funds from the hotel occupancy taxes paid for by visitors. And the Texas A&amp;M campus will bring incredible research projects and will grow industry and our reputation to come for decades. As a reminder, Fort Worth was one of the largest U.S. cities that did not have an anchor Tier One university within our city limits. We will always be incredibly thankful for the amazing higher education partnerships we have across the city of Fort Worth, including UTA and TCU and Texas Wesleyan and TCC and Tarleton. But to have a Tier One research university of the caliber of Texas A&amp;M to make this type of investment, I assure you, is a complete game changer for our city. The fact tonight that we are talking about these three massive project together shows the incredible coordination, not only between the private and public sectors, but also all of you as stakeholders working together to create something very special for the city of Fort Worth. This is decades in the making. The policymakers in the room today that will answer your questions, and I assure you can answer all of them, have thought about this for years, about what it looks like to create the second phase of life for the convention center district in Fort Worth and dream bigger. The city of Fort Worth does always move forward, and I think right now we're proving we can better than ever into the future. Thank you all for taking the time this evening to join us, and I look forward to hearing the presentations.
Thanks, Mayor. That was really great global civic context for this project and the other two projects that you're going to hear about. And I've got the privilege to dive a little bit into the context of the geography. So let's talk a little bit about what's happening in downtown and what's happening in this quarter of downtown so that before the presenters come up, we really have a good shared understanding of the scale of, of what's happening in this part of downtown. Before I do that, it's, it's important to remind you that under the leadership of, of Mattie and Mayor Price, the city staff, the city manager, the Visit Fort Worth team, the convention center, the convention center staff, and also the convention center advisory committee did a whole lot of work. And a lot of you probably don't know that there's been a convention center advisory committee, and I think we've got on the next slide, a list of the people who are on there. Mayor Parker, Councilwoman Elizabeth Beck, David Cook, Mike Crum, Jessica Miller, Matt Holman, Bob Jamison, Kim McQuiston from Texas A&amp;M, Rosa Navahar, Brian Newby, and, and I served on that as well. So let me talk just a minute about what's going on in downtown. The first is, this is the development pipeline for downtown Fort Worth right now. $2.5 billion, it's actually 2.5, there are a couple of things we're not counting. So for your elevator speech, when people ask you what's going on in downtown Fort Worth, use the number 2.5. It's $2.5 billion. But this is where, this is where it's coming from. Institutional investment, that would be the convention center and City Hall and Texas A&amp;M, of those sorts of users, followed pretty closely by hospitality. And that includes the new convention center hotel at some point in the not-too-distant future with residential close behind, and then some mixed-use projects that are, that are in the pipeline as well. $2.5 billion is, is a historic record for downtown. But what's really interesting about that number is, and, and this graph, which are very interesting, is where these things are located. So this is a graph of the catalytic projects that are, that are in the works for downtown. And you can see a pretty tight cluster in the lower right-hand corner. That's where we are. This quadrant of downtown is going to see wholesale change over the next handful of years. The convention center itself, the convention center hotel, Texas A&amp;M with multiple buildings, and, and The Omni in particular, leading the way. These are the things that we know are going to happen today. There is a lot of land in the immediately adjacent area that can also be redeveloped as well. And we are highly confident that there will be, at, at a minimum, in all likelihood, more hospitality and more residential built. And I think it's safe to say that Texas A&amp;M has never seen anything it didn't want to grow, and so Texas A&amp;M over the years will grow as well. So let's go through the district overview. So this is a good aerial photograph of where we are. The Fort Worth Convention Center expands in its place and Commerce Street opens or is straightened. This is an interesting slide. The hotels on the right-hand side of the slide, those are already built. And as you can see, the new convention center hotel, the Sheraton owns a block in downtown, and The Omni, three hotels on the south side of the convention center are, are very likely to be built in the not-too-distant future. The only one with a question mark on it is Sheraton, but they have indicated over the course of the years that they are interested in a new hotel, so perhaps at some point that'll be done. The Kimpton, San Manuel, Sinclair, and AC, and Hampton have been built in, in recent years. On the residential side, DECO 969 is under construction and it will open in just, what? Before the end of this year. About 450 residential units have been approved at the Jones site, right across the street from the Central Station. The old Frank Kent Cadillac site has been designed a couple of times for apartments, and there, I know that there are a couple of developers that are looking at that site as well. 250 Lancaster opened, that was a, a city-public-private partnership, and Burnett Lofts opened recently. So we've seen a lot of residential on this side of town with more to come. Interestingly, both DECO 969 and the Jones are concrete and steel high-rise apartments. And so we're starting to see the, the level of density that we'd like to see happen in downtown. And then, of course, there's higher education with Texas A&amp;M in control of four blocks and master planning those four blocks, and UTA in rental space in the depot building right there on Jones. Needless to say, I, I think we as citizens of Fort Worth ought to encourage a very healthy rivalry between UTA and Texas A&amp;M and encourage their expansion as much as we encourage them to battle it out on the football field. So when you put all of these things together, you can see that in this quadrant of downtown, there's a lot of activity that's happening, a lot of property that is changing hands, and a lot of imagination and investment that's being poured into the landscape of, of this quadrant of the city. And so with that as context, it is time for me to bring up Mike Crum. Mike is the director of the city's public events department overseeing the operations of both the Fort Worth Convention Center and the Will Rogers Memorial Center. Mike came to Fort Worth in 2019 from Charlotte, North Carolina, where he was vice president for business development and chief financial officer for the Charlotte Regional Visitors Authority. After 30 years of experience with venue, event, and destination management, Mike wanted to be at the helm of "one more supertanker," that's in quotes. And he jokes that he was here for two full months before COVID put a pause on his grand plans. But here we are, and here he is, finally ready to launch. Please welcome Mike Crum.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mayor Parker. Good evening. It's my pleasure to kick off the overview of Phase One of the Fort Worth Convention Center Modernization and Expansion Project. According to the state of Texas, Fort Worth's visitor economy generates over $3 billion a year and employs over 30,000 of our residents. Yes, hospitality and tourism is big business in Fort Worth. The Fort Worth Convention Center has been one of the keystones of how the city of Fort Worth supports hospitality and tourism. Since 1968, what was originally known as the Tarrant County Civic Center has been attracting events that put visitors in our hotel rooms, our restaurants, and shop in our retail establishments. Those visitors eventually go home, but their money stays in Fort Worth. When the city assumed ownership of the convention center in the late 90s, a vision was created that would develop the convention center in concert with Fort Worth's growth as a visitor destination. The first step in that vision was taken between 1999 and 2003 with the initial renovation of the facility. The project we're here to talk about today is the long-awaited next step in creating a convention facility that reflects Fort Worth's status as one of the largest and most vibrant cities in the United States. What David Crabtree, our project manager with Broadus and Associates, is going to describe to you today is a two-step project. Phase one is budgeted at $95 million and redevelops the convention center's back-of-house facilities, permitting the center to operate during Phase Two, which will modernize and expand the venue's customer-facing facilities. We have a great team working on this project. Please stand if you're on the team. A terrific combination of both national and local expertise on our design teams and our construction teams. We are particularly proud of our construction team, which is a true joint venture between Burn Construction Services, AECOM Hunt, and EJ Smith Construction. This team is a great example of the city of Fort Worth's commitment to business equity in our community. Our teams are very cognizant of the amount of construction that will be happening concurrently in this corridor and are in communication with each other. In fact, that's the reason that we're all here this evening, to let you know what's happening and when it's going to be happening, so you can plan accordingly. I want to thank Mayor Parker and the city, the Fort Worth City Council, Macy and Elizabeth, you're in the back somewhere, wave thank you for their support of this project and their support of hospitality and tourism in our community. Without the $52 million in ARPA funding that was approved for this project in 2022, we would not be in a position to launch this project next week. With that, I'll turn the podium over to David to introduce you to Phase One of the Fort Worth Convention Center Modernization and Expansion Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Not only do I get the honor to work on the fourth convention center, I also have the privilege to build Dicky's. So for me, being a Fort Worth resident, grew up in Fort Worth and raising my family in Fort Worth is really two great projects for me to be a part of. So talk a little about phasing. So the first phase is Phase One. And what that phase is going to do is we are going to design a full new kitchen, state-of-the-art kitchen, and reprogram the back-of-house services. We are going to then take down the annex and realign Commerce. Also, what we're going to show you is we are going to reprogram the southeast corner to be more of an entrance and inviting to really kind of give that extra look for the city of Fort Worth as the front door with A&amp;M and everyone developing on that side. Once that's complete, we will then start looking at Phase Two, which, as Mike mentioned, it will be to reprogram and bring up to new standards for the existing facility and then also to rebuild the dome project. So design overview, we've broken this up into really two big phases, so Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is then broken up into two phases, so Phase 1A. Since we are staying operational during this, we have to then build the kitchen first to then be able to do Phase 1B, which would be to take the annex down and realign Commerce. Once that's complete, then we'll have the renovation and the arena phase. So here is the latest rendering that we have of the southeast entrance. So what, what you're seeing here is the stairs going up to the entrance, and then the goal is to have a plaza for the street to make it more walkable and inviting for a new development across the street. What we're also looking to achieve is a terrace, so then that way you can have a nice feel walking outside on the mezzanine level of the facility. Here's the ground floor. So what we're getting out of this is now we're going to have about 11 docks, full-size docks that can take on 18-wheelers with two extra docks for smaller trucks. We're then reprogramming the southeast entrance for more of a lobby feel to come up to the ballroom and increase the vertical transportation. And there you can see also Commerce Street is realigned. And that achieves then having the ability to develop the site across the street. This is then the mezz level, which will really be back-of-house office space for our partners. And then also there's, and the orange is the terrace feel. That will then extend in Phase Two. Here then is the new 12,000-square-foot kitchen, and in there you can kind of see it, it's the little U shape, and that is a new tasting room to come in and bring in clients, or you can rent out and have a nice tasting kitchen with the chef. So this is just a rendering of then the Commerce Street realigned and a potential look at what the development could be on the other side. So schedule overview. Really, since we're breaking up in Phase Two, two phases, 1A and 1B for this first phase, the design has been complete on both phases. We have our permit approved for Phase 1A, and we will be mobilizing end of next week and starting construction. Phase 1B will come at a later date, once 1A is complete. The anticipated start time for that is about November, December of 2024. And Phase Two at the moment is to be determined for this project. And here's a video to sort of give you an idea of our sequence and timeline. Jay is the CEO of Jay Chapa Strategic Solutions LLC. He's a former 16-year city of Fort Worth executive who's now providing advisory and strategic solutions on public policy and economic development on projects. He's currently consulting with Texas A&amp;M on their Fort Worth campus.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. I'm going to go ahead and call up, we're going to do this as a team, so I'm going to call up the other two folks that are going to be involved in this, and all three of us will kind of mill around after the presentation, so you have questions in case who can answer it. As was mentioned, my name is Jay Chapa. I'm actually consulting for Texas A&amp;M system on this project. I retired from the city of Fort Worth about a year and a half ago after 25 years. Once I left and had worked on the city side of this, A&amp;M asked me if I would help coordinate the local partners and local activities here. Kim McQuiston, who was mentioned as part of the advisory committee, is the director of the new Fort Worth campus for Texas A&amp;M. She is actually had schedules, her schedule, she was out of town, so she couldn't be here, or else she would be doing this piece. But she sends her regards, and she and I are really the, the contacts if you have questions regarding the project and this going forward for Texas A&amp;M. As was mentioned, we will be talking about primarily the first building that you probably see, the, the block already wrapped around. We had a groundbreaking in June for the Law and Education Building that will be the building that will bring straight academic functions, including the law school, new law school space, to the campus. And then we hope to be following that up with a research and innovation building, is what we're calling it, that will include additional academic Texas A&amp;M-related system agencies as well as research in parts of the, of A&amp;M that will co-locate with commercial industrial industries that will want to be co-located with research that Texas A&amp;M is undertaking. As the mayor said, the goal is hopefully that will attract a lot of interest in Fort Worth and really spur a new downtown innovation district around the research that A&amp;M is bringing here. And then ultimately, the, a third building where the current law school will stand would be at a future phase. It takes several years for, for those kind of buildings to fill up on the academic side, so that planning will start in the future once this second building is up and is getting ready to be constructed and the like. But with that, I am going to turn it, turn it over to the folks that will be doing the presentation. Brett McCully is the chief officer of facilities for the Texas A&amp;M system. He'll go through what the system is, but it is across the whole state, and he runs all of the operations, not the daily operations, but the operations of buildings for new buildings, construction, and, and bringing things to the ground. So I'll turn this over to Brett.
Well, first of all, howdy. You're going to get better at that. Trust me. And you're going to love to see that, you're going to love to hear that with all the activity that is coming. Again, my name is Brett McCully, Chief Facilities Officer for the A&amp;M system, which gets confused a lot with the university, that big one in College Station. The, the A&amp;M system really is comprised of a lot of universities and a lot of agencies all around. This map just shows the headquarters of those. It doesn't show large, longstanding university facilities in Galveston, or we've got a new one in McAllen, where, where spread out all over. Those agencies, you've probably heard of Texas Transportation Institute, or AgriLife, or Engineering Experiment Station, those all fall under the system. So even if you count the AgriLife, and you know what extension agents are, the A&amp;M system is in every county in the state. Just, it would be just a, a black outline if we put all the offices out. My role in facilities planning construction is to implement every capital My role in facilities planning and construction is to implement every capital project, 10 million and up, for all of them. We also manage private projects that are going on. Right now, we're handling 80 projects, about $4.9 billion with the A&amp;M System, growing everywhere. New facilities, new programs, like the ones we have here. I think we've hit before, we've got four lots there, about three and a half acres combined. The existing law school building is on Commerce there, it's the old switch building, which remains while we've already started construction on the southernmost lot, which again is the Law and Education Building. This is, this is that beginning of that tier-one anchor in the downtown sense. The first phase is that Law and Education Building. The idea is to have, it's a lot of classroom, a lot of office, but a lot of teaching space. Relocates quite a bit of the law school to it, and be able to have a spot for the academics and the leadership of the new area there. Phase Two, which would be in the north end of that, as Jay mentioned, is really an innovation center. It's where you would house more research and maker space, a nice fancy word for actually putting your hands on things and creating it. But it would have space in it to be able to have private companies that lease space that want to be around that type of innovation. And for those of you also know, the law school here has a big emphasis on intellectual property. I think we can all add up really quick, the idea of patents and research and development and commercialization, all in a real small spot. Then the gateway building, again, would be to take that existing building down, once we've got Dean O'Dea and his fine folks out, rebuild it as a combination of another academic, another commercialization, but then also retying the campuses up to the existing convention center into the Water Gardens, that area. This is the current rendering of the building. It is still moving from when this was done. We're still playing with a lot of brick shades and elements to the sides of it. 225,000 square feet, eight floors with a penthouse. Again, it'll house offices that we know of, or students and faculty from Texas A&amp;M University, Tarleton State University, and then the actual admin, Dr. McQuiston and her staff. We also understand that we several of the agency folks that, as many of you know, are already in Burnett Plaza right now, Texas Division Emergency Management, AgriLife, all be able to have space in this building. All right? This is just a represented site plan for it. We're taking up pretty much that whole block of the building. But this is our team on it. A lot shorter list, we're moving awful fast on this, but Stan Tech's our lead designer, using Pelly Clark. They brought in a lot of emphasis because of what they do with the law schools around the country. And a contractor, again, we have a true joint venture partnership with Turner Construction, Car Con Industries, and Source Building. Again, not, not just together as a convenience, no, this is really a group that was working together, solving that, demonstrating also the system has a huge input and emphasis on minority involvement, inclusion, and participation in leadership. With that, I want to go ahead and introduce Larry Chudeski, who's going to come up and talk more about site logistics and the site plan.
As Brett said, so the Turner Car Con Source joint venture is responsible for Phase One, the Law and Education Building. So just kind of, this is kind of mid-build, approximately a year from now, this picture that we're showing, but we, if you've driven by the site, we are taking the one lane of Calhoun, the west lane of Calhoun, and then we're taking all of 15th Street as we build, which is the northern side of the site, the site that you, the road that you see there with a little trailer on it. Directly to the right there is the Sheraton to kind of gauge how you're looking. We're going to kind of spin around the building. This is looking from the Jones side, so this is the east elevation. 16th Street will remain open. We, again, taking the entire city block, so all the parking around there will be, will not be available as well. But you could drive, you can drive, and there might be the occasional random street closure for activities. This is looking at the south side, towards the north. Again, just, you know, wide open on 16th, and we'll try to keep Jones as much open as possible, and there's the lane closure on the left-hand side of the building for Calhoun, which opens back up at 16th, it tapers at 14th. Kind of a brief, just a kind of a lay of the land and, you know, to the project site. And then we actually have a lay-down area, which is off Lancaster, between 17th and Lancaster, between Jones and Calhoun. And then you may have seen some trailers pop up just directly south to the, of the Sheraton. That's us. We've tried to put as much signage, but you may not have seen it yet. And this is kind of the flow of, the flow of traffic would be people coming 30 to 35, up Jones, use our lane closure on 15th and south down the site, kind of utilize that to our fullest extent, to try to stay away from, we're starting about the exact same time as the convention center, try to stay, but a secondary route would be to come up, Calhoun, I'm sorry, Commerce, and then wrap that back around, come south on Calhoun on 14th. Just kind of real quickly here, in October, we'll be done with Piers, structural will top out a year after that, and then a year after that, substantial completion. So October 31st, 2025, it was the substantial completion date for the job. And there's the beautiful picture again, and any questions?
This is a general question for everybody that's talking. One of the things that tends to happen, I think this is wonderful, new buildings, new influx of people, is the infrastructure to support that with additional parking. I haven't heard anything about that. So what's the plan to support all of this new development from an infrastructure standpoint?
Yeah, there's a, there's an overall plan. On the infrastructure side, these buildings are being built, the water and wastewater facilities that are needed to support the building, as well as the encore on the electric side, that's all being added as part of these projects as it moves forward, to support the densities there. As far as parking goes, there's an overall parking plan that's being worked together in cooperation between the city and Texas A&amp;M to provide parking for these new facilities. As I mentioned, there'll be future buildings, it will have parking below that. The city is leasing space and current available parking garages to Texas A&amp;M, as these lots no longer exist for A&amp;M to park on. And then ultimately, when the straightening of Commerce occurs, and you have the new property where a convention center hotel would go on, part of that is to have parking garage, and so there's an overall plan being put together for this whole quadrant of the city, to make sure that there's enough parking for all the new activities. The question was, one of the, one of the slides that was presented was the three buildings with like a block of green space. You know, that was, that was an early concept idea. At the end of the day, just like was asked for parking, in order to get enough parking and enough, get a campus feel, there will be green space within the buildings or between the buildings, but it may not be the full size of a block. And Andy was just mentioning that, that don't fall in love with the idea that a whole block will be a park there, because it probably will be a portion of a block as the, as the facilities are built and designed, trying to stitch those together so that you have more of a campus feel.
Every time I see a map of downtown Fort Worth, we have a hard cutoff with the railroad tracks. There's an awful lot of land to the east of the tracks. Are there plans to be building more of downtown in that direction?
That would be an Andy Taft question? No. I think, I think the, that would be a great idea, the, the, the hard stop of the railroad tracks is, creates an issue from a cost and ability to get back and forth over. I think as downtown continues to grow, and there's enough activity and values continue to go up, it'll only make sense that that will come, but I don't know that, there's no plans now, because from a financial standpoint, it's not currently, it's not really feasible to do something over there and be able to get over, back and forth in the railroad tracks.
All right. It's my pleasure to introduce your next speaker. Your next presenter is Larry Offe, General Manager for the Omni Fort Worth Hotel. He's a seasoned hospitality veteran with more than 33 years of experience, starting his hospitality career in various roles, operations, sales, and marketing. Larry joined Omni Hotels and Resorts in 2007 as Director of Sales and Marketing, and was also the first associate at the Omni Fort Worth Hotel, after serving in various other director roles throughout the Omni brand, such as overseeing the resort division for three years. He returned to Omni Fort Worth Hotel in 2016 as hotel manager, and has been the general manager for four years. Please help me welcome Larry Offe.
Thank you very much. Mayor and Andy, thanks for including us today, and Team A&amp;M, Team Convention Center, I even learned some stuff today, so thank you guys very much. Almost 17 years ago to the day, across the street, the hotel was a blacktop, and here we are, 17 years later, doing phenomenal, and all blessed to Director of Sales and Marketing Kelly Graham, who's in the background, sorry, Kelly Todd, and then also phenomenal Visit Fort Worth team, who's helped us fill this wonderful city over the last 17 years with great conventions, which brings us to this point. We need more. So as we continue to move forward, I do not have a fancy video, I'll go on record saying that right now. We are in the beginning stages, so we are about 12 months behind A&amp;M and the center in the fact that we actually just hired our architect last week. And so as we continue to work through our plans and get our renderings out, I'll continue to share that with the community. So, quick overview on the brand, not a lot of folks are familiar with Omni. So Omni is a, is a privately-held brand, just under 60 hotels nationwide. Family's actually based in Dallas. I always kind of kid, for those that maybe saw Mr. Ruling at our annual breakfast with Andy and his team, his wife's first date was at the Water Gardens right across the street. So he's got a, very much an attachment to the city. So he's very excited about building this hotel, or expanding this hotel. But we are an elevated brand, we try to give an elevated experience and make sure that everything we do, it creates an experience for the guest. So, current hotel, I think most of you all are familiar with this, but we opened up in 2009. We've served over 2 million guests in the last 14 years, which has been pretty exciting. This last year, 2022, I guess a year ago, we had a full $12 million renovation where we redid our guest rooms, which looked phenomenal, still have that Fort Worth flavor. And then we also redid our meeting space, and then our lobby as well, creating that living room touch in Fort Worth. Very excited about that. Currently have six dining outlets and Makara Spa, so Whiskey and Rye, Cast Iron, Water Horse, Bob's Steak and Chop House, Wine Thief, and Starbucks, and I'm hoping everybody in here's visited every one of those, so thank you very much. And then in addition, we do the food and beverage here at the Convention Center with Trinity Food and Beverage. We are also home to 84 wonderful people that live above us, they call us, call us home, and they've got a great relationship and excited to have those folks be a part of us. So what does the future look like for our hotel? Ownership plans to invest $200 million to expand the hotel, so we obviously purchased the TCC property right to the adjacent behind us, to Lancaster, and then also off Throckmorton. So we have two pieces, two parcels of property. Really excited about that. In spring of '24, we look to break ground and finish open in 2026. We will have 1,000 guest rooms, up from our 618 today. We'll add about 50,000 square feet of additional meeting space, taking us to about 110,000 actually, of square feet of meeting space. Redesign rooftop pool experience, for those of you that have been upstairs, you know that, that we are desperate need of that, and so we're really excited about that. But we're going to try and make it a resort feel, adding cabanas and things of that nature, and a new pool offering up there as far as a restaurant. We have a couple different restaurant options we will add off of Lancaster, that will create a, activating that corridor, and I heard parking in the back, we'll be adding a new parking garage off of Throckmorton with over 450 parking spots, so very excited about that. You guys have seen this map, but just kind of a quick thing, we will combine the hotel with the lot behind us, activating Lancaster, very excited about that, and then the lot right behind us, which sits by the Parker House Garage, for those that are familiar with that, we will take that blocktop service and build our parking garage there. So, that was a quick presentation, so. Probably my quickest ever. Any questions in regards to the Omni that I can assist with? Good question. So the question was, is, in the, in the expansion, what will be, what percentage will be residential versus guest? We will actually not be adding residential, it'll strictly be hotel guests. So out of the 400-plus rooms we'll be adding, 25% of that will actually be suites, we are going to up our suite inventory, so that is part of the project. Good question. So out of the 50,000 square feet we're adding, what will that breakout be? So right now, we're looking to add about a 28,000-square-foot ballroom, so similar to what we're sitting in here, this, when it opens up. Then we will take our current Fort Worth ballroom, which is about 10,000 square feet, we will shrink that a little bit, and then add some different breakouts along what we call the glass corridors, so all of our lobby space.
How about how tall, how many floors do you plan?
That is another good question. How tall will we be? We are still working through that piece of it, now that we do now have the residence. So current hotel sits up to 15 floors, so the facade, right, the stone facade, and then where the glass part is of the building, that's all the residences floor, 16 through 33. So right now, we are looking right about 10, 11 floors is how we're trying to make the footprint work.
Larry, thank you so much, and to all the presenters, thank you very much. Mayor, thank you for sticking with us, I know you've got someplace to go. We have time for one more round of questions for anybody who presented this evening. Any, any questions from the, from the group? Sure. In fact, we'll leave the QR code if you want to, if you want to register online for that, we'll just leave that up for later, and you can come closer until it can work. Otherwise, write your email address down and, and give it to the folks in the back, and we'll make sure you get on that list. So that takes one of the items off my agenda, which is, if you have not registered, please do use that QR code, and the city will make sure that you get on a distribution list for future information alerts that'll go out about the construction of the convention center for Phase One.
So, let's go back to the convention center itself.
You should stand closer to the microphone.
Oh, no, no.
Did that whole thing.
I can hear the feedback, it's crazy. There are trees there now on that southern end, but in your rendering, there were no trees there. And even with the university spot and everything, there's just positive trees.
Yeah.
What are we going to do about that? I mean, in, in view of everything that we're hearing?
Sure.
Don't we need more trees?
Yeah. In fact, the downtown design standards require trees every so many feet?
Mm-hmm.
And so all of these buildings, I think we, I think it's safe to say that all of these buildings will include a landscaping plan that isn't shown in these architectural renderings. Yes, ma'am?
And then the other question I wanted to ask is, does scanning the QR code give us this presentation from tonight, or do we wait for the city's site to put together?
No. If you, if you scan the QR code, there's, it'll take you to a website where you can find this video when it comes online, but we also want to make sure to capture your email address so that you can get future information. That QR code takes you to a City of Fort Worth website.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other questions? No? All right. Well, thank you so much for coming out, have a great and safe evening.